Fall River City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cadine?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Lalabie LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier? Viveras? President Ponchi?
Here. I'd like to indicate to the council and the community that we have a couple of counselors on the disabled list tonight. Counselor Kilby and Viveras are both battling a flu and stomach bug. Counselor Viveras, Counselor Pelletier, rather, has spent some time in the hospital. He is recovering well, and he'll be probably joining us very soon at our next scheduled meeting. So we are going to be without three counselors tonight. First item on our agenda, let me read the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised of such recordings or transmissions being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda tonight is Citizens Input. Before we do that, I'd like to recognize Council Vice President LeBeau for the resolution. Citation, rather.
If I could call Bob Schenk, Pat McNerney, and Jared Souza down, please. Gentlemen, on behalf of the council, we have a citation tonight recognizing Jared Souza in the achievement of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement you can reach as a Boy Scout. And I'd like to know if Bob or Pat would like to say a few words or let us know how he's come to get this achievement.
Thank you. We're very proud of Jared and the work he did to do it. It is only about 2% of all Boy Scouts that earn the rank of Eagle Scout. There is a lot of work that they have to do. One of them is they have to earn a minimum of 21 merit badges. Jared has earned 28 merit badges. They also have to coordinate a project, an Eagle project, where they are in, since the foreman or the supervisor of that project, they have to coordinate, work with the people, get them together, mobilize them. And Jared did a shoe drive where he collected 1,000 shoes, 1,000 pairs of shoes?
Two thousand.
Two thousand pairs of shoes, and distributed them to several homeless agencies or agencies that help homeless people. And he was very successful with the shoe drive. His basement looked like a overflow of shoes. We're very proud of the work he did.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this is a lifetime achievement. He's gone from Cub Scout to full-fledged Eagle Scout. So he has a lot of hours and a lot of effort invested in this. And some of us, not much of myself, but mostly Pat and a gentleman over there, Dave as well, has been with him since he was this big. And a lot of hard work and well-deserved, that's for sure.
So your citation says, "The city of Fall River, Massachusetts. Official resolution, be it resolved that the city council hereby extends its commendation to Jared Arthur Souza, Troop 486, in recognition of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council extends best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be entered in the records of the city council." This is adopted today, January 8th, 2019.
All right, next item on our agenda is a loan order for $750,000 for Community Preservation Act Bio-Reserve Project. Oh, I'm sorry. Citizens Input, first person and only person to sign up to speak, Reverend Jim Horwesby, 260 Lake Avenue. Yeah, sure, right there, just have a seat, pull the mic close, three minutes.
Jim, one of those on that side of the table. I speak--
You just turn your microphone on, just push the button closer to you.
I speak first--
No, I'm sorry, I asked you to please--
Did I do this without a microphone?
No, I asked you to please sit down, speak into the microphone.
We'll get some help, Colleen's gonna--
Someone needs to help me turn it on.
There you are.
I speak first about the loan order. I urge you to support it. The Bio-Reserve is a quality-of-life issue of great importance to our city and also to the surrounding towns and city of New Bedford. I also speak thanking you for your efforts to try to resolve the rail trail difficulty without, in a peaceful and amicable way, without allowing a dangerous crossing or damage to the trail's obvious beauty. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a loan order for $750,000 for Community Preservation Act Bio-Reserve Project, members of the administration.
Thank you, Terry Sullivan, Administrative Community Utilities. So we have before you the $750,000 loan order funded through the CPC for the acquisition of two large tracts of land for conservation, one at 75 Yellow Hill Road and one at 861 Indian Town Road. The Indian Town Road is about 16 acres, Yellow Hill Road is over 35 acres. Before you, in the past, actually in September, you have approved the acquisition orders. So we've been through both of these lots, and the orders were signed, approved by the council and signed by the mayor in September. This piece is the final authorization for the funding process so we can have the funds available to close with the property owners and retain both of those large tracts of land for conservation purposes.
In addition, counselors, this loan order will be reimbursed by the CPC over a 10-year period, and that's also been approved.
Councilon C. 5, Council Vice President LeBeau.
The only question I have on this is, with the repayment of the 10 years at $78,000 per year, is if the CPC isn't renewed, have they saved those funds and they're just going to give them out each year? Or are they counting on $78,000 from each year's awards? Because if it's not renewed, then we won't have five years' worth of payments.
Yeah, good question, Counselor. We actually pursued that, and what has to happen is, the CPC is fully responsible for the 10-year payment. Should there be any activity taken to discontinue the CPC search charge? That could not happen until the funds were sufficiently in reserve to address the full obligation for the debt service over the 10-year period. So at the present time, the CPC does have funds in reserve sufficient to address this, perhaps not the total amount. But before they could discontinue the program, that obligation would have to be met, and the funds would have to be secured to assure the repayment.
So if the residents voted not to renew it, they would still pay into it until they had that money in reserves?
Yes, the program cannot be discontinued until all of the obligations have been addressed and all of the funds are remaining. But to that extent, I mean, they do have funds available to them that have not been utilized, and those funds could be used to address the debt service. So if there happens to be, we'll say at the time of the citizens' vote, $500,000 remaining on the debt service, those funds would have to be secured and made available for that debt repayment prior to the time when the program could end.
Interesting, so they could vote against it, and yet it wouldn't end because they still owed?
That's correct, Counselor. So I know Mrs. Hadi has looked at the reserve accounts. Yes, at the moment, they do have monies in the reserve account. They also have payment that they're still making on the $200, and I think it's $40,240, loan order that was approved two years ago, I believe it is. So at this particular point, there are monies in the reserve account. I don't have the exact balance, but Mrs. Viveras is correct. They could not, the program could not end until there were sufficient funds to cover both loan orders.
Senator Gill, thank you.
Thank you. Councilon C. 1, Counselor Cadine?
Thank you. My first question was along the same lines, just in terms of the way the loan order is written, and you said that we've, CPC has already gone out and actually done a loan order before, but just seems like a typical loan order where it references Chapter 44A. Would there be any, I guess, is there not a need to put in there some type of reference to Chapter 44B, Section 11, which is the CPC, so that we know that there's a difference between the regular loans versus the CPC loans?
Not according to bond counsel, Counselor. We submit this to bond counsel for their approval, and they realize that CPC would be referring to it or paying for it, so I'm going to say it's been approved.
All right. Just in terms of the, and I know we'll probably do the state qualified bond act and just piggyback on the state's bond rating. What's the city's bond rating?
We are meeting with Moody's actually tomorrow, so I think at that point it would be the best time to give you an update on the rating. I don't, I didn't bring with me the specific rate right now.
Okay.
And I don't have the state's rate either, for that matter. And we're meeting with them next week.
Okay, and I can appreciate that. And the only reason I ask is that the mayor has gone out there several times for the last year and a half saying that we've had a bond rating increase. And I've vehemently argued that point because we've never had a bond rating increase since he's been in office, and I just wanted to kind of dispel that. I think it's misleading to the community and to the city counselors. In January 2006, the city had an A2 rating, and it was downgraded, I mean, the day that he took office, so obviously the downgrade isn't his fault or responsibility, but it went from an A2 to A3. January 2017, Moody's reaffirms the A3 rating. They remove a negative outlook, but an outlook is not a bond rating increase. 2018, they affirm an A3 rating, so we're sitting at an A3 rating. So I'm just kind of, I guess I just want confirmation that we haven't had a bond rating increase.
We have not, Counselor.
Okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Motion to refer to full council would be appropriate, then. Motion to refer to full council has been made by Counselor Long.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Camara. Discussion. Hearing not all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item 3 is a communication from the Alliance to Save the Trail, referred to this committee in August of 18. Set item 3 on our agenda. Invite our corporation counsel down. Is it the council's will to also invite down the individuals, Mr. Pearson and Mr. Kuzick?
Yes, so be it.
Feel comfortable with that?
Second.
Those individuals here, they are here. Come on down to the table as well. As they come down, Attorney Macy, the floor is yours.
Well, why don't I start? I'm Joseph Macy, Corporation Counsel for the city of Fall River. I think we can discuss items 3, 4, and 5 together, although I'd be more than willing to answer any questions. I will note that Mr. Carrick is in the audience, and Mrs. Glickman, and I believe her son, are also in the audience observing. I think the operative thing or item for the council is the letter that I forwarded to you as soon as I got it, and I think was forwarded to you again, dated December 13th, 2018, from the Office of the Attorney General. And that letter was the culmination of a number of meetings between all the interested parties, the bike people, I call them the bike people, some of the city counselors, and myself. Prior to my meeting with the Attorney General, who I met with on August 28th, with Matt Thomas, I had forwarded to them a number of plans, a lot of documents, and a video, a CD, of the meeting at which the matter was discussed quite extensively. Without totally reciting or reading into the record the entire letter, I think the salient portion of the letter is on the bottom of Page 1. And it says, "As discussed below, we believe that the stakeholders within the Fall River community are well situated to reach a resolution to this dispute that will avoid negative impacts to the Al Lema-Cookersham Rail Trail without intervention from our office at this time." They go on to detail some of, not the findings they've made, but some of the information they've been provided with. And they reiterate that, "At this time and under these circumstances, no negative impact to the trail has occurred, nor is there any imminent risk of such harm occurring due to the active engagement of the parties to continue to explore various paths forward at the local level." I will tell you that the experience was somewhat unusual in that nobody met together. In other words, the Attorney General, who was kind of spearheading this, met separately with the rail people and their attorneys. There's some reference to communications with a counselor or counselors, and they met separately with Attorney Thomas and I. And they wouldn't, although I knew, tell me who else they met with. But I do think that the timing of this is auspicious. December 13th, we're only, not even a month away. Essentially, what they've said, at least as I read it, is they trust us more than we trust ourselves. And to that end, there's certainly no impediment to my meeting with anybody who wants to meet. Mr. Carrick, I spoke to him today. I don't know that he, I know he got notice of the meeting, but it only went out last week. He indicates he's willing to meet, so I think we're on the right track. I don't know if you have any questions.
Councilon C. 3, Counselor Camara?
Well, I might first, since the council has referenced items 3, 4, and 5, could I move that we discuss items 3, 4, and 5 together?
Motion made to take items 3, 4, and 5 together, have been made by Counselor Stephen Camara. Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing not all those in favor. Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor?
And I'd just like to clarify that I am the counselor that did speak quite a bit with the representative from the Attorney General's office, and for clarification, because there were some who felt at a previous council meeting that I had referenced a possible compromise. My compromise is referenced in the letter that we look toward a pathway that would go east rather than west, and therefore a pathway that would not traverse the Coockersham River Rail Trail. I did meet briefly with Mr. Alex Carrick and drove around the property and suggested to him, and he agreed to pursue the possibility, consideration of a path from the Cloverleaf property through the adjacent former Quaker property out into a driveway that's already in existence, again, east of the rail trail. It would not address the Glickman's property, so that remains outstanding. But nonetheless, I had suggested to Mr. Carrick, and I spoke to him briefly today, that I would like, as now that the good Mr. Pearson has returned from his extended trip to Southern California, and congratulations, Grandpa Brian.
Thank you.
He was out on the West Coast celebrating the birth of his grandson. And I also wanted to include our city council vice president, because she had co-sponsored a couple of resolutions with me on this issue. So now that Mr. Pearson's returned, I suggested to Mr. Carrick, and he's agreeable, and I haven't yet spoken to Ms. Lalabie recently, but I did speak to her previously, and she's also agreeable, too, seeing if we can, if you will, parlay an agreement that would ease all of us by taking the pathway out of Cloverleaf easterly through the former Quaker property. It's not going to be done without some serious agreements from private property owners and certainly the public sector as well. But I do think it's a viable option, a viable compromise, and it's one that hopefully will address what I think we all share, is that we don't want to see any disruption to the Al Jalema-Cookersham River Rail Trail. Also, I would just like to finish by saying that a couple of resolutions are listed in here that were co-sponsored by myself and council vice president. There was also an additional resolution, which is not here, and it actually was not a resolution, it was an order. And as you know, back in the day, previous to the council sort of being excluded from issuing orders, we did issue an order, and the mayor did approve that order. And that order was that if there is any disruption or any action by any private individual or public individual or anyone to the AGLQRRT, that immediately all city departments would provide, that have the authority, would provide cease and desist orders to stop that. And that was adopted, I believe unanimously, by the council, and it was approved by the mayor. He did put in a little proviso that he did question whether we even had the authority, but nonetheless, he did say, since he was in agreement, in essence, that he would approve the order. So the city council and the mayor are on record through an order that requires that any disruption to the Coockersham River Rail Trail be immediately met with cease and desist orders from any department, and I would assume it would be the building department and possibly the health department, and maybe even the park board, that would all step in and basically provide their legal authority to stop any kind of disruption to the Coockersham River Rail Trail. So I'm open to any questions or any comments that those at the table would like to make, but I think the, at least personally, what I intend, next step, is to convene with Mr. Pearson, and certainly if he has others that he wishes to bring with him, Vice President Lalabie LeBeau, and representatives from the Carrick family, to see if we can't come to a compromise. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, could I add anything? Mr. Kuzick, could I add anything to this at this point?
We're not looking for confrontation right here, right now, but they did, the AG's office did say, "Sit down and talk about it." But, City Counselor Camara, you said this was a local matter, it wasn't a state matter.
She said?
The administration has told the state the same thing. It's a local matter. So Fall River's mess, their idea is, you guys clean it up. We're willing to, you know, listen to what you have to say, but bottom line, last time we met, Mr. Carrick said any compromise would be a road going across the trail. That was his compromise. That's not a compromise. We don't accept that. And even if he does go east, the easement's always there. 10 years from now, even if he sells the land, easement stays with the property. We're not here, someone else can push a road through it. We'll sit down and listen, but we're not going to be a rubber stamp.
I would just like to add quickly that I do look forward to having this meeting. Let's see if there's any ideas. And I know the Alliance group, if there's anything we can do to help to make sure that no road crosses that path, we'll do it. So we're hoping that we all can work at this. I know Attorney Macy said the important point was on Page 1. We have a little difference of opinion on that. I think the important point of the AG's letter is on Page 3, where they do say the EEA funds were utilized for the takings. That's something we've been talking about for a year. The AG's office also says that it looks like possibly Article 97. They can't make a definite opinion because we're not legislators, we're not a district attorney, we're just regular taxpayers in the state. So unfortunately, they needed, I guess, a legislative body to ask them for a definite opinion. So, but when you look at the letter, there's some strong language in there that they say, and it was also the intent, they bring out, the intent of this whole project was for recreational purposes, not for a road. So I just want to say again, the Alliance will work, we'll take a look. If we can compromise, that'd be fantastic. Of course, the compromise, we don't want to see a road crossing it. Thank you.
Councilon C. 1, Counselor Cadine?
Thank you, Mr. President. And now, along the same lines as Mr. Pearson, I did read the letter from the Attorney General's office, and it was quite lengthy, and she did, or they did, point out that, you know, obviously there was some compromise and coordination amongst the various groups to try to work everything out. But on Page 3, out of all the, you know, the four-page letter that was provided to us, you know, the last paragraph where it states that, "Aside from the extent to which the proposed crossing would create safety issues or unreasonable interference with the AGLQRRT, which we have not examined and on which we are taking no position, the location of this proposed crossing on the EEA-funded AGLQRRT easement may be potentially inconsistent with Article 97 in the absence of legislation." So, I mean, I was concerned about that, out of everything that was stated there. I mean, that's probably the one most concerning statement that's in there. If we don't come to some type of an agreement, I think we may be potentially, without having any legislation in place, in violation of the Article 97.
You may be right. What I think is significant about the letter is it took till December 13th to get it, that, at least as I read it, the Attorney General, after an extensive inquiry, they won't call it an investigation, believes everybody is operating in good faith. It does say exactly what you say and exactly what they say. It does say also, "At this time and under all these circumstances, no negative impact to the trail has occurred, nor is there any imminent risk of such harm occurring due to the active engagement of the parties to continue to explore various paths forward at the local level." And I think Counselor Camara wants to take the lead, that everybody is obviously not only willing to talk to each other, able to talk to each other. And I do think that the Attorney General's letter provides a reasonable framework for the discussion. I think it, in my opinion at least, it backs us-- I think it, in my opinion at least, it backs us up a couple of steps from the "I don't trust you, you don't trust me." And I also think it advances, I agree with them a little bit, some of the points they've been making with respect to the more technical aspects of a linear park within the trail, et cetera. So I do think that rather than operating from the city's agenda or Cloverleaf's agenda or the bike trails' agenda, this is a rather complete and good blueprint to start the discussion.
Yeah. So my, the reason for my statement is, is that first of all, I want, I do want to applaud the, you know, the teamwork effort and the cooperation amongst the various groups to get to the table and have these conversations, and I hope they pan out and we can get something of substance there and that we're all in agreement. However, just as one counselor, if we can't get something in agreement, I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that specific sentence in there so that there's no violation or if there is, that we have some type of safety net measure that we can fall back with the legislation to amend it if that's the case. I just want to limit the exposure from the city side, that's all.
Well, I think that's accurate. I can't speak for the Attorney General, but I think one of the things that allowed them to take the amount of time they did was that nothing untoward has happened and all the standstill that was promised has occurred, so.
I yield, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Anything further? Hearing non, motion to table would probably be appropriate since there's more information that needs to come to the council. Motion to table has been made by Counselor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That would be items three, four, and five. Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Committee on Finances, made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Seven o'clock, full council begins. Fall River City Council meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim.
Here.
Joseph Kamara.
Here.
Stephen Kamara.
Here.
Kilby.
Lolibety-Laboe.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Pelletier.
Bavarez.
President Ponti.
Here. If everybody in the chamber could please rise for a moment of silent prayer. And a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting, law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unforeseen by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a request for the mayor for the confirmation of the appointment of Natasha Pereira to counsel on aging.
Is there a motion to confirm, deny?
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm has been made by Counsel Vice President Laboe, seconded by Counsel Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat three.
Just on each of these, if the clerk could confirm that the individuals do not hold any other position in any of the boards or commissions.
Ms. Pereira does not.
Ms. Pereira does not, okay.
Motion has been, any further discussion? Hearing none, motion has been made and seconded, roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim.
No.
Joseph Kamara.
Yes.
Stephen Kamara.
Yes.
Kilby.
Lolibety-Laboe.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Bavarez.
And President Ponti.
The mayor's request for the appointment of Richard P. Souza to the library trustees, and Mr. Souza does not serve on another board.
Move adoption.
Motion to confirm has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion, Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President Laboe.
Taking a page out of Counselor in seat three's book, this gentleman, Mr. Souza, does not have any related experience to the library whatsoever. The, I'm actually just going to leave my comments to that because I don't want to say anything personal about this gentleman, but I will be voting no on this one. That I yield.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call. On confirmation, Counselors Kadim.
No.
Joseph Kamara.
Yes.
Stephen Kamara.
Yes.
Kilby.
Lolibety-Laboe.
No.
Long.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Bavarez.
And President Ponti.
No. Three, three. Motion fails, three, three.
Item number three is the request for the reappointment of Ronald Bernier to the Sewer Commission. And, no, he does not serve on another board.
Move adoption of confirmation.
Move adoption of confirmation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. I have been voting no on the new appointments, but I've been usually pretty firm with the reappointment, so I'm going to be voting in favor of this reappointment. Roll call.
On confirmation, Counselors Kadim.
No.
Joseph Kamara.
Yes.
Stephen Kamara.
Yes.
Kilby.
Lolibety-Laboe.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Pelletier.
Bavarez.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
The Committee on Real Estate, at a meeting held on December 18th, voted unanimously to recommend that the communication in order be referred to the full council for action. This is relating to the parking facilities.
Madam Clerk, what was the recommendation you said from the committee? Is it a positive recommendation?
There is no recommendation. It's referred to the council for action.
With no recommendation?
No.
Discussion, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Well, as the only member of the committee who made the motion, I did make the motion to adopt the order.
Yeah, but I don't believe that passed. I believe Counselor Kilby and Pelletier, Madam Clerk would have to, I don't have the record of votes.
Do we have the minutes to that meeting?
We do, but we don't have them in front of us this evening.
Regardless, it's before us now, Counselor, so whether it's a positive, you were on the committee.
Based on the committee's report, the motion did not carry in committee.
Do we have the minutes to the meeting?
I don't have the minutes to the meeting.
She does not.
Can we recess and get the minutes?
We're the not prepared council. The meeting was only on December 18th.
But they would be written out, I mean, somewhere, right? Notations from which they would be copied?
The clerk is not in the office.
We're not going to recess the meeting for this. The clerk is indicating what she has on record, we're going to go by that. You're on the committee, so.
Yeah, I made the motion to adopt the.
Okay, but it didn't pass clearly, so.
It did, it was unanimously passed.
It was unanimously passed?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's a miscommunication. Regardless, it's before us now, and we can have the discussion. We're not going to recess for it, though.
So moved. Move the order.
Move the, move the order has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Long. I would appreciate maybe having the administration.
Can I get just a point of order? I mean, if.
Counselor in seat one.
Just can we get a little bit more clarification on the motion? Because if the clerk is saying that it's just before us for action, he's moved.
There is no.
Well, he's making a motion to adopt the.
To adopt the order.
The order.
Madam Clerk, can we read the order, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, not the, not to adopt the committee's report.
Yeah, this is to adopt the order, as presented.
I stand corrected. I just want to clarify.
No, no, thanks. I'm going to have the clerk read the order into the record, please.
Order that the City Council of the City of Fall River hereby accepts and authorizes the mayor to accept the transfer of land and buildings at 157 Third Street, assessors map N-19-86 and N-19-87, and 1 Pearl Street, assessors map N-25-1, from the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, free from all encumbrances. Said conveyance to be by deed and in a form acceptable to Cooperation Council.
I would like, I think it's only fair that, since this was referred to this committee, if the council's will, I think it's appropriate for the community and council to possibly hear from the administration, to hear where these savings are, where these expenses are. This is a real estate transfer that's occurring here, and I think we all need to be fully aware of what's going on, and I'm not sure if everybody does. So I think it's appropriate that we make a motion to waive the rules and have members of the finance team come down and explain this. It's totally up to you, though.
So moved.
Counselor.
Seconded.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
Just got a couple of questions just to clear. Since it's free of all encumbrances, that's all contracts, all everything, so it's starting fresh. We don't have to fulfill any contract obligations of our DA, contracts that they have for parking in these facilities are going to be null and void if this transfer is to occur? No, actually, Counselor, there is an existing lease agreement and that will transfer with the garages. We are subject to honor that lease agreement. And there was another lease agreement that I think has just expired, so that one is not an issue. The agreement with BBP is still in force. It can be terminated on 90 days' notice, but that is also transferring. So we are accepting the properties with the existing lease agreements. And when's the current lease agreement that you're speaking of as to which facility? Pearl Street, and it's, I believe it's 99. I can give you the exact name, Counselor, but it's the agreement that was negotiated with the former Travelers Building and the owner associated with it for parking spaces for that building. And it expires when? Pardon me? And that agreement expires when? That agreement has approximately 25 more years to go. It was an initial, and let me find it for you, an initial five-year term with options at the election of the building owner. And we can cancel out within 90 days? No, that, that remains in full force and effect for the balance of the term, Counselor. It's the BBP arrangement. Those are the better businessmen who were operating the garages. That is terminating, but has a 90-day clause for termination. And the other lease agreement goes for another? Was with the U.S. Postal Service that has just recently expired. But the one that's in effect that we're going to, it's got another 25. When was that renewed? Again, there are options, Counselor. I'm searching for that agreement. I think it might have even been in your packet, Counselor. What was his question? It's 99 Main Street, right? So it was 30 years officially signed in 15. Um, Counselor, it's a 30-year lease and it was initially signed in 2015. It was item number two in your initial packet. Did I? Um, no, I believe this would have been when it came through real estate. How many spaces is that for? That's on Pearl Street? This is on Pearl Street, Counselor. It's 150 spaces. Is that on the paper you gave? Um, no, the lease agreement itself, no, but the rental amount of money that's being received as revenue is the first line into Pearl Street in the second section that says 99 Main Street Parking LLC. This is the agreement we're speaking of. So Counselor, it had an original term of 10 years and then option terms, the lessee shall have the option to renew this lease for four additional five-year terms for a total term not to exceed 30 years. And there is a provision in the agreement that the rates paid can be adjusted based on Consumer Price Index. Have they ever been adjusted, do you know? Pardon me, Counselor? Have they ever been adjusted, do you know? Again, we'd have to do a full audit of the parking garages to determine if that rate has changed. How many spaces is in Pearl Street? You've got 150 that are leased, and how many spaces are going to be there? How many spaces actually are? Even flat surface, because there is flat surface there, correct? Pearl Street has approximately 382 spaces, including the flat space. And you've done the financials on this and think that that's good to assume that that lease agreement? Well, at this particular point, Counselor, we're forced to assume the lease agreement because of the terms of the agreement and when it was signed. We're comfortable that the $81,000 or so that it currently generates is one portion of the revenue that we can generate in, at Pearl Street with 382 possible spaces, and they're utilizing 150. We have several spaces that we could utilize for additional parking for the residents of the city or the community in general. Is that paid upfront each year? I'm really not sure. We don't have all of the records of BBPs, so we only have the year-end financial information. And Counselor, just, in the interest of full disclosure, the lease agreement says that the lessee has the option to lease additional parking spaces after the first lease year and for the remainder of the term. For a reservation fee, they would pay $2,000 per year, again, as a reservation fee, and the lessee shall have the option of leasing up to an additional 250 parking spaces at the facility at the current lease rate at the time that it's exercised. But we're not aware that that's been exercised. They could actually take over the garage if they wanted to. It's a big portion of it, Counselor. Currently, there are 75 other spaces, just for the record here, there's currently approximately 75 other spaces that are monthly renters. So they may be city employees or other individuals that are participating or parking at Pearl Street.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in terms, and I spoke about this before, and I know you've given a projected income analysis, a yearly analysis of $421,300. I mean, that's revenue that's being generated, and I still, for the life of me, can't understand why the Redevelopment Authority would be trying to turn this over to us in the fact that they obviously need cash in order to redevelop parts of our city. I mean, we've got an urban renewal plan for both the waterfront, and then we also got a downtown urban renewal plan that's before us, coming from the Redevelopment Authority, in which they're trying to redevelop the waterfront and downtown. And I'm just having to look at the document that's before us, and the first thing they outline is, however, "A parking analysis of the downtown suggests that if existing buildings downtown were fully occupied, the available parking might not be sufficient for all uses." So if they've got an urban development plan that they want the City Council to approve, parking has been highlighted as a major problem for downtown, why are they turning over two parking garages that would potentially generate $421,000?
Well, there are several reasons, Counselor. First of all, they made the affirmative vote to transfer the parking garages over to the City of Fall River, I think in full recognition that they require a certain amount of maintenance, they require a certain amount of operational expertise to maximize their income. At the present time, when Mrs. Sahadi looked at it, there really wasn't a lot of excess revenue being generated on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority. There was a very large amount that was being expended for personnel costs, and there were other expenses that BBP had to incur that the city perhaps would not have to incur. So it, the garages in their current state are not generating much income for the Redevelopment Authority at all, so.
Right, so, but if the Redevelopment Authority, the board itself, can't take two of the parking lots property that we have. can't take two of the parking lots property that we have in the city, the administration can come before us and tell us that they can generate or make some changes to these parking garages to generate $421,000. I'm not sure why that board is in existence, right? Because they are putting together, I mean, a pretty lengthy urban renewal plan and I mean, it's 100 and, just for downtown, 153 pages or so. It highlights exactly what the Fall River Redevelopment Authority's task is under Massachusetts General Law. They have the ability to bond. So, I mean, I'm not quite sure that why they wouldn't, even with the direction of the current administration, make those changes utilizing some of that profit to pay off some of the bonds to obviously bring up those two parking garages to the standards that they need to be held to and then also creating some additional parking for what they're talking about in urban renewal plan. It just doesn't, from, just from an eyeball standard, you know, if we're just trying to look at it, does it make any sense? It doesn't make any sense to me. So I personally don't think that that's a smart move and I know they voted for it. I just, from a city standpoint, we as a city council need to start looking at all our boards. We talk about economic development, we talk about the Redevelopment Authority, and I think this is two assets that should not be turned back over to the city because it has the potential to generate money for the Redevelopment Authority. If the Redevelopment Authority had the proper leadership, they could utilize what's under their jurisdiction based on Massachusetts General Law and revitalize those two parking garages and get it to where it needs to be to provide the necessary parking relief that we need in downtown. I mean, we're going to go through this entire plan and maybe in a 10-year, 20-year period, try to get all these developments in and then we're still going to be at a point where, you know, we don't have any parking. So when it's in their jurisdiction, they've got more flexibility in terms of redevelopment than the city would have. So it's just me as one Counselor, so.
Well, Counselor, I think, yeah, I mean, you make valid points, but I think the Redevelopment Authority Board now believes that they don't have the expertise to manage parking facilities. Clearly, the city does. They would be the first to acknowledge, and they did so at the committee meeting, that they have not appropriately maintained the properties and done the proper maintenance and made the proper capital improvements. And we're not going to begin to talk about why that didn't happen, but it clearly did not happen. And originally, the garages were turned over to them back in 2015 when they did not have a cash flow. That's since changed. They have the proceeds from the Vio Park and they've taken on additional funds. So I think originally, I don't know that they were inclined to want them in the first place, but I think it was felt by the city at the time, well, we'll give them some source of revenue to help them, you know, cover their expenses. But I don't know that they ever wanted to take on this task initially. So their feeling is, is that the city is probably better equipped and to your point, I mean.
In terms of what though? Better equipped expertise in terms of what?
Well, already, the reason that we're going to be able to turn these into profit generators and be able to generate almost a quarter of a million dollars in proceeds to the city on an annual basis is because we're going to make some operational changes to the facilities. We are going to be converting to automation and utilizing kiosks, which are very common in a lot of communities. And that in itself is going to address and reduce the operating expenses by almost $200,000.
And I recognize that, but that's, I mean.
Well, they could do it, to your point Counselor.
That's what I was going to say, you said expertise.
They could, but they didn't.
I mean, we don't have anybody in city government that has operated a parking garage before. I mean, this is just things that we've seen in other communities that they're doing either in parking garages or on streets to, obviously to your credit, figure out how we can reduce some of these costs around these two parking garages and increase the revenues that are coming in. What I am suggesting is that they could have done the same thing or had some type of consultant come in to say, hey, listen, we've got two parking garages. What do you recommend us to do? I mean, it just, and just as one Counselor in seat one, it creates some type of concern from my standpoint. If we have a board that can't, within their own ability, analyze two parking garages and figure out how to make it work and we can turn it over to the city and the city can do that within a couple of months, how do we anticipate or expect the board to execute 135-page urban renewal plan?
Well, the urban renewal plan, as you know Counselor, is being developed by a consultant and I would expect that they may continue to utilize the consultant for the implementation of the plan, although we're going to be making the resources of the planning department available to them as well. But I would agree with you. It's, we can, we can talk about what they could do and what they should do, but the reality is they don't currently feel that they're adept to do it. They've asked that the city take them back and feel that the city could better manage them and it's not a priority for them.
I get that.
They do have a lot.
And not to belabor the point. You know, my point that I'm trying to make is that the Redevelopment Authority needs money. They have two assets available to them. It's going to take some investment or capital to get them to the point they need to be and it's going to, according to the administration, generate $421,000. I for one, don't think that that should be turned over back to the city. They should utilize and capitalize on that $421,000 yearly to try to invest it somewhere else. That's just my take. And I know there's obviously some cost of the buyback period on the cost of bonding and things like that may not necessarily be the $421,000 when you get to the paying down things, you know, bonds and things of that nature, but that's just me, I yield.
Also too, the $421,000, as you see on the spreadsheet, it includes marketing and repairing those efforts. So we're really looking at $200,000 to $250,000, at least initially.
For both?
Combined.
Yes Counselor. So the net income is approximately, was it $240,000? And that's assuming that we don't immediately do the capital repairs necessary to open the top level, the top one and a half levels of the Third Street Garage. So this, these projections are based on existing conditions and existing capacity as we currently know it. As Counselors may recall, the city does have opportunity. Our legislative delegation did succeed in getting monies in the transportation bond bill for parking garages for the downtown and the waterfront. We do have MassWex grants available to us. So we do have grant opportunities to address these capital repairs and do so, to be able to address these capital needs. The additional information too, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you. We had heard that BBP had in fact, and it was in their operating agreement, they had to establish a maintenance and repair fund. That maintenance and repair fund, Mrs. Sahadi was able to determine currently has $103,864 in it. The agreement is very clear that on the transfer of the parking garages, those funds get returned as well to the RDA and then would be turned over to the city if we accept them. So we are going to be able to utilize. Two combined. So that we are going to be able to utilize funding existing to be able to address the purchase of the kiosks and to be able to make some maintenance and repairs to the facilities to spruce them up a little bit. And so they are essentially not going to be presenting any financial obligation to the city of Fall River in the near term and only should we decide to move ahead with capital improvements, which of course would be subject to council approval.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Lekmira.
Just a few questions and the, what is the staffing level of the Redevelopment Authority at this time?
The total payroll is approximately $200,000.
You mean the people that are currently working?
I believe they represented that to the real estate committee. I want to say they said six, but I'm not sure.
The Redevelopment Authority has six people?
No, BBP.
BBP. The Redevelopment Authority has no paid staff.
So that, and what does our parking enforcement department have for staffing right now in terms of approximate number of?
I'm going to say maybe six PCOs, parking control officers, and then we have maintenance personnel onboard as well. And that's to the point, the model that we are suggesting, the traffic commission is certainly capable of purchasing, procuring and installing the kiosk system, which we've looked at in the city overall. And the plan is to have the parking control officers simply make regular rounds through the garages as they do with our city streets and determine if anybody's in violation.
So the answer, Mrs. Viveras, is that the Redevelopment Authority has no staff.
Correct.
They have BBP, which has only one person who remains on their board and he wants out.
That's correct Counselor.
So there is, there is, we have, we have parking garages that are basically offens. No one wants them of the people that currently own them. So they're a very neglectful entity as it relates to the operation of the parking garages. Now that could change, but that's the status of it right now. On the other hand, we have a parking department which functions quite capably. They walk the streets particularly around these parking garages. They walk North Main Street, South Main Street, Pearl Street. They're every day doing what they're charged to do, which is parking enforcement. And they are prepared and desiring to take on this responsibility as part of city administration. In the meantime, the buildings are in definite need of attention and they can receive that attention if this transfer takes place or they can remain another crumbling edifice similar to our former police station that crumbles in our center city. I think we need to take the bull by the horns and realize that doing nothing is detrimental to a centerpiece of our center city. The parking enforcement entity under, under able staff is ready and prepared to take on this responsibility. I wish that things were better. And when this was transferred to the Redevelopment Authority, there was a hope and a desire that things would be better, but it hasn't worked out. So this is not irreversible. If the city takes on this responsibility and down the road, five years down the road, two years down the road, any period of time down the road, if the city decides that the Redevelopment Authority is back on its feet, capable of undertaking management of parking garages, then maybe there would be a desire by those future leaders of the city to make a new decision, which would be the old decision, of putting it back into the Redevelopment Authority. But right now, to continue down the path that we're currently on is foolharded and it's irresponsible financially. And I think that it's important for us to just realize that something currently is not working and we do have staffing onboard in government center that can make this work, at least currently. So I'm hopeful that the motion that is before you, which is the motion to adopt the order and allow this transfer to take place, which I believe was the intent of the committee, even though there were some concerns. But I think this council can make that decision tonight and I think it should make the decision. And another thing that's certainly been brought to our attention by the, by Mr. Hathaway from the Building Inspection Department is that these buildings need attention and they need it now. Winter fortunately has been mild, but snow will fall in all probability. And we need to start moving ahead on taking the steps necessary to secure these buildings so that more detriment doesn't occur. So I hope the council in their wisdom will take the right action and adopt this motion that's before you. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President Lobo.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on this. I appreciate you taking the time to go over this with me yesterday and all of the different pieces of it. I know we've talked about this on this council floor about when committees send something to refer to full council that we ask that they have some kind of recommendation. So I'm disappointed to see that this has none and with two committee members not here and maybe a disconnect on what this should or should not have been for a recommendation. We really don't know. The second thing I wanted to say is I did catch just the very end of that real estate committee meeting because it was right before our council meeting. And it was just an interesting piece to hear was that they didn't want the parking garages because they wanted to focus on the downtown and the waterfront, the renewal plans. However, the Economic Development Committee met the immediate night before and the Redevelopment Authority was invited to come to that meeting and not one member showed up. So I'm concerned that they don't want the garages and nobody shows up to the meeting that only had those two agenda items on it. So now we are rescheduling that meeting and hopefully members of the Redevelopment Authority will show up if that is their focus. I know that it was a unanimous vote for them for the garages. It does seem strange to me that they would be giving up money, but from a budgeting perspective, from our point, I mean, it's extra money in our budget. It is strange that they would give it up. It's their unanimous vote to take, I guess. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Akhadeem.
Thank you. Just a couple of things because I think we oftentimes just kind of speak outside of both mouths. We don't want to raise taxes, but we want to take things over. We want to do X, but we want to want to do Y. So when it's convenient to raise taxes, we raise taxes. When it's convenient to not take property, we won't take property. Doesn't make any sense. For the buildings to say, for somebody to suggest that the buildings are just going to stay as is shows the type of individuals we have serving on the Redevelopment Authority, which are appointed by the mayor. So that therefore shows leadership or a lack of leadership or a lack of getting all the different boards on the same page with a goal in minds. Now, we're going to take this over and we're just going to miraculously improve all these parking garages yet. How many fire departments, how many fire buildings do we have that need to be maintained and we have not yet maintained them? City Hall, we've got city hall repairs that still need to be taking place. We can't even take care of the capital items and the infrastructure that we have on our side, but we're going to take more on when we have a group that is tasked with redevelopment. I mean, if we put this on the market right now to sell, I mean, you're going to have individuals looking to purchase the property anyways. Because somebody's going to come in and somebody's going to be able to turn this around and make a profit on it. So again, why the priority would not be from the Redevelopment Authority to say, you need money, here it is, this is what we need to do and why the mayor is not taking a stance from that standpoint is beyond me. In terms of staffing, I mean, the Redevelopment Authority can hire and obviously they fired a company that was representing them that had staffing. And again, when we start talking about staffing for parking garages, I mean, what are we talking about for staffing? I mean, it's not a whole lot. I mean, you can go into parking garages where you never meet anybody, right? And then we just talked about it, automated. So in terms of staffing, I mean, it's going to the kiosk and collecting maybe some money that is put in. But I mean, today's day and age, everything is on credit cards and debit cards, right? So I mean, there's not a whole lot of overhead associated with that. And again, if that's the case, then contract with somebody to do that and just redo a contract and make sure that the contract is in the, is in the best interest of the city and the Redevelopment Authority. Again, it just does not make sense. And again, we're going to start taking these properties over when we haven't even addressed all our needs with buildings on our side. And by the way, they do have money and they have the ability to bond. Again, we're going to allow them to just sit on some money, not bonds, not invest in what they have to generate additional monies, but we'll take it on and then we'll, we'll bond on our side. I mean, the point of this is to try to leverage the resources that we have. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I'm kind of not sure where I'm going with this. So I look at this twofold. So first, I look at it as an opportunity to be a revenue increaser, an opportunity to bring in new revenue at limited to no cost to our taxpayers. Then I look at it from an expense standpoint and say, okay, what are we getting ourselves into? So first off, before I get into some of my questions, why not do, has there been any discussion to maybe do one of them at a time? Maybe just take one over and then maybe sell another one, such as the one on Pearl Street, for instance? Has there been any discussion about that, if not, why?
Well, the Redevelopment Authority was approached by their operator BBP and basically said, we don't, we don't want to do this anymore. So they were lacking an operator for all of the facilities, not simply one over the other. So it was at that point that it was to transfer all of them back over because they still have the operating needs that they don't have anyone to undertake. As your colleague in seat three mentioned, there was only one volunteer remaining and he wasn't interested in continuing. So they were lacking the operational capability to do any of the facilities and it wasn't a matter of one over the other. I would just speak to, and I did appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about it, Mr. President. But if you look at the changes in the operation of the facilities and the net income that we would be able to generate through some automation, we could easily use the revenues from the parking garage. we could easily use the revenues from the parking garages to repay any debt service that was required. So while we would be taking on debt, if we had to bond, if we didn't get our grants, which we're hopeful that we would. But we do have, the monies being generated by the facilities to more than offset the debt service cost that we would be incurring. So, again, it provides, I think, not only net operating income, but also an ability to cover its own debt service in the event that we decided to make those capital repairs.
All right, so speak to the, the point where I think the city's plan, and based on our conversation this afternoon, Mrs. Viveras, the city's plan is to try to put those kiosks in similar like you have in Providence Place Mall or other malls, maybe without the machine.
The arms.
Yeah, the arms to come down, whatever it's called. And kind of simplify that oversight with it all, right? That's, I think that's the plan.
Correct.
So, I guess my question, maybe you don't have the answer to it. Why didn't the redevelopment authority explore doing exactly that? If they came to, came to the administration or the redevelopment authority and said, "Look, we don't have the manpower, we don't want to do it anymore," I'm just curious as to why the redevelopment authority doesn't have the interest in automating it themselves and continuing to bring this income in for the redevelopment authority?
Well, again, Counselor, I think they were very clear that they don't feel adept and that they have any knowledge or experience in operating parking facilities in general, doing any kind of traffic and parking enforcement. The urban renewal plans, again, they anticipate that what they're going to be doing is dealing with real estate, dealing with, you know, eminent domain takings, which they have that power to do. They're going to need funding to be able to do eminent domain until such time as they can put the properties back on the tax rolls. So they have some money in the bank, but they're anticipating that those funds will be necessary to allow them to implement their urban renewal plan and maybe perhaps do some additional development even within their biopark. So, I, I think it was a question of priorities for them, Mr. President. They, they have limited resources and limited expertise and decided that their efforts were better spent in doing the economic revitalization that was intended with the urban renewal plan and, and again, their existing biopark, rather than taking on an operational requirement, be it, you know, operating parking decks. So they, they just weren't comfortable, you know, that that was a priority for them. The other thing I, I would mention as well, when the garages were transferred over to them, the condition was that if there was any disposition of those garages, that the proceeds would come back to the city of Fall River. So they could spend, they would benefit perhaps from the annual cash flow from those facilities. But if they were to decide to sell one of those facilities, as you alluded, the proceeds would come back to the city of Fall River. They wouldn't stay with the redevelopment authority because that was a condition of the transfer. So, they're assets, but they, they don't afford them the full value of an asset because if they were to dispose of them, there'd be no, no benefit to them whatsoever, so.
Right. But, so, is the city going to take any approach to dispose to any of them? Dispose any of them?
I, I think we need to look at it, Mr. President, especially in light of the Pearl Street garage where we have the long-term lease agreement. The, the terms of that agreement, you know, they're, they're very beneficial to the less E. So I think we might look at that. They have the ability to take on more spaces if they choose. So I think that's a facility that we may take a look at and decide, you know, is it best for us to simply sell the asset or continue to operate it? But again, it's much too soon for us to even consider those alternatives until we've, we've had the ability to fully analyze, you know, the, the total value of the repairs that are needed, totally look at how we can maximize. When Mrs. Sahadi was looking at it, she was assuming existing rates. We, we believe there is excess capacity and that perhaps with an appropriate marketing initiative, that additional revenues could be raised. Her projections were very conservative. She didn't make those assumptions. But I, I think there is, there is a lot of evaluation that needs to occur. But, but the good news from our perspective is that on day one, there's going to be a very positive cash flow to the city of Fall River. And then it affords us the time to evaluate if we should keep both facilities or perhaps one over the other might be better, you know, better disposed of. But we have some decisions to make.
Yeah, and I'm sure, well, obviously, the city council would need to be part by a real estate committee.
Absolutely, yes.
And making any decisions to sell real estate.
Exactly.
I guess, I guess my question is, speaking on your topic on day one. So, let's say the council passes this, mayor adopts the council's decision, and then it goes to attorney Coughlin who represents the redevelopment authority. He'll prepare deeds, he'll prepare all this other stuff. He'll transfer it through, through its ownership, through its legal process. What happens on day one? Should the city take over this? And there's going to be, so are we going to take on the salaries? Are we going to take, what, what, what's going to be the transition from getting the two kiosks in these two places to having the city run these on day one? What's that process like?
So, Mrs. Ferrera has already done a lot of research. She's up to speed on all of those equipment items that are available to us, specifically the kiosk. So once we're sure that the, that, once the council approves the transfer, then we would initially take steps to go ahead and assume the operating responsibilities for that. There is a clause in the BBP contract for a 90-day notice of termination. They may be willing to shorten that timeframe. But the expectation would be that, once the council, you know, votes approval, should you vote approval, that we would have ample time to secure the kiosk, to notify BBP and have the new operating systems available on the date that the real estate would actually transfer to the city. So there would be no assumption of personnel that are currently employed by BBP.
How about liability?
The same thing. I mean, we would, we would be providing our own liability insurance for the benefit of the, the properties. We have a comprehensive property policy now, so we would simply be adding those assets to that property. And Mrs. Sahadi, I don't know if she got chance to, I know you had.
Yeah, we spoke this.
Appreciate the other expenses that would be eliminated.
Yeah, and, and, and I think it's only fair, Mrs. Sahadi, if you can indicate to the community. So if this transfer does, does occur, what expenses are going to be reduced on the city side that are currently before us right now? That is, in the purview of the redevelopment authority? What expenses are going to be eliminated, avoided, or reduced?
Well, as, as it relates to BBP. So BBP currently is paying for data processing, they're paying for office space, they're paying for telephone, they're paying for their own audit. They have office expense now that is to the tune of about $10,000 annually. So all of those expenses will, will not exist under the model that the city takes over the operations. The audit itself, please?
Which, I, which is how much collectively? So everything you speak.
Collectively, that totals approximately $50,000.
So that's an expense the redevelopment authority, if they maintain this management, will continue to have to pay, or whoever, BBP, will continue to have to pay, it'll be immediately eliminated upon ownership on the city side?
That's correct, Counsel.
Okay. I, I cut you off, so if you want to continue.
No, no, that's okay. So going back to, to the projections and, and really what we're looking at is, when you really look at the BBP operation, the combination of the salaries that they were paying and, you know, to the Counselors in seat one's point, certainly BBP could have looked at automating and, and changing the, the structure of the operations of, of the garages. But they chose not to. They chose to continue with the payroll aspect. So from BBP's point of view, at least from my understanding, their, their objective was to provide parking to the business merchants within the city. And that was how they started back a number of years ago. And so, as long as they broke even, they're a nonprofit, and as long as they broke even, they were happy with the results because they were providing this, this garage parking space. $52,000 on an annual basis, give or take, were dollars that were paid by BBP to the redevelopment authority. So if everything else was equal, and we're not talking about the redevelopment authority necessarily operating the garages themselves, the redevelopment authority would be losing annual revenue of approximately $52,000. They have a agreement now, a management fee agreement with BBP that provides them with $15,000 worth of annual revenue. And then they have an additional amount of monies that were paid. And we go back in time. It was originally developed as a pilot to the city of Fall River and those dollars equal approximately $37,000. The monies were paid from BBP to the redevelopment authority annually, but were never turned over to the city of Fall River. So, we have a number of years, just another one of those expenses and/or revenue sources that, you know, as you, as you look at and analyze certain accounts, you realize that BBP has been paying the redevelopment authority. And the pilot was developed under a prior administration, but it was never signed. So we have an unsigned pilot agreement. But that represents an additional $37,000 that the redevelopment authority was receiving. The garages historically were the city's garages and therefore the pilot agreement was developed, but never executed.
All right, so let's speak a little bit about this money that's sitting in some kind of an account to the tune of $103,000. Mrs. Viveras, you indicated that, that is in the hands of the redevelopment authority. I'm sorry, it is in the hands of BBP. However, has the redevelopment authority approved the transfer of whatever monies are in that account of $103,000 that will go to the city? Because I guess my question is, does the redevelopment authority keep the $103,000 and not transfer that over to the city? And then my second part of that question is exactly where is that money going? And who is going to have the purview of transfers and appropriations to that account?
Okay, so what would transfer to the city would be all of the assets, including that account. The account by virtue of the agreement with BBP clearly belongs to RDA. So that would transfer to the city along with the, the properties in question and along with the leasing encumbrances. So again, we're, we're accepting the current lease agreements as well as the current assets and that account would transfer as well. Regarding the use of that, I don't know, Mrs. Sahadi, you want to comment?
So, I spoke with the, the accountant, if you will, of BBP's this afternoon to acquire this information. So they have two operating accounts right now. As of 12/15, which was the date of the bank statement, Third Street had $49,000 in it and Pearl Street had $15,500. That's, those were in operating accounts. The capital accounts were a combination of a savings account and two CD accounts, which totaled another $39,000, which is where this $103,000. So as of today, it may not be $103,000. There may have been some operating expenses that were paid from December 15th through today. He wasn't able to give me that information. But what we could do in order to set these, these dollars aside, if you will, for strictly for maintenance is what we could do is we could establish a special revenue fund and include whatever the dollar value is that gets transferred. We'll say $100,000 for discussion purposes and use that $100,000 for maintenance of those garages. At least in the short term.
Okay. I, if I do support this, I would like that verbiage in there. Specifically, whereas, as Mrs. Sahadi clearly indicated that the special, special revenue account be used specifically for those garages. I don't want to see them being used anywhere else other than that. At least that's just my, my, my own opinion. And I'll, my last question is, if you could please explain a little bit about the long-term plan specifically for the Third Street facility, which that's a facility that has the two floors that are closed, correct?
Floor and a half.
Floor and a half.
Correct, yes.
So can you speak a little bit about the, for the community and for the council, the long-term plan on what expenses are going to be incurred? Because of, of course, if you could free up more spaces, it brings in more income. What are you looking at for an action plan of sorts? Whether it's through MassWorks grants or whatever, to fix these facilities that we all know are in dire need of repair?
So we have a, a few options. First of all, I think we would want to solidify, and we've, I've begun this process, but we need to solidify the funding that was included in the Massachusetts, the transportation bond bill for parking, specifically for parking garages in Fall River, downtown and waterfront, to determine whether or not those funds could be used for capital improvement of the existing garages or whether they may be reserved for new construction. One of the, the thoughts that was generated as a result of the initial architectural review and structural review of the garages that was completed for Third Street was that you would have to look at the cost of repair and determine now because of the new technologies that are available in construction, maybe it would be more cost-effective to build a new garage on the flat surface lot and demolish the existing structure or at least take off the top level.
The flat surface lot, is that?
That's across the street, correct.
Across the street, that's where a lot of our municipal employees park, right?
Yes, correct. So we would basically just swap locations. We'd put the garage on the flat surface area and maybe either totally demolish the existing facility or more likely, just take the top floor, remove the top floor from the garage facility and then repair it. So we, we'd want to check to see if there were any limitations on how those funds could be utilized. The MassWorks grant clearly we can, we can use as we see fit. But again, we'd want to take a look at that transportation bond bill.
Is there, no, but let me ask you, is there an appetite at all to do a, because I've seen a lot in a lot of other communities where it comes to these updated parking garages or levels, let's say. I know there's one specifically on Pleasant Street near Pub 99 where there was an issue with parking. They, they put them up. My question is, is there, is there an appetite from the city's perspective to leave the current facility alone, work on that, and also possibly look at some MassWorks grants or any other grants for the flat surface site to maybe put a two-layer lot there for, for the accessibility of the city hall employees who do have to park throughout the city?
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor. I, I think that's definitely something where we would look to try to maximize the use of the space and to try to incorporate additional parking if that were available. So, and even the, the method of construction, I mean, you mentioned the facility on Pleasant Street. I would venture to guess that that was probably less expensive to construct than the facilities that we have now. So, we clearly have a lot of options. And once we, you know, had control, then we would set about the process of determining, you know, the highest and best use of, of the assets. And that would include the, the flat surface area as well, so.
So the worst-case scenario, if the city comes, you know, after working this for however long you've worked it and it's in your ownership and you say, "Whoa, this is going to be a little bit too much for us." What's that plan going to be? We're going to give it back to the redevelopment authority again at that point? After it's something they don't want?
I don't see that happening, Counselor. I, I think we would, we would simply take a look at the existing garages and decide how best to either repair or restore that capacity.
Or liquidate.
And, or liquidate, absolutely. That would certainly be an option.
I personally feel, and I'll conclude with saying, that I think the Third Street facility has opportunity for rent, for income. I think we're already getting into a, a, a purchase with respect to Pearl Street that is already limiting us to what we can and can't do. So my, I would urge the administration to possibly explore the opportunity of possibly selling the Pearl Street facility, possibly to the individual who has, how many, 50 spaces?
150. 150, with the option for another 200.
It's probably in their best interest. I just want to see the, the city obviously reap that benefit. And I'm sure that, you know, the price is right. I'm sure that that's up for discussion. And I'm sure the city could use somewhere to the tunes of millions of dollars if that's possible. Because it's not going to be a sale that is, you know, small. There's rental income opportunity here. There's also opportunity for growth. And with our cap rates, the way it was explained by our city assessor, there's certainly opportunity on the commercial side. So, so I'll allow my colleagues to ask some questions now, but for now, I'll yield. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor C. Six, Councilwoman.
I agree with most of the things that the fellow councilmen said, but I've got a couple of other questions. Sorry, I'm sorry. And just looking at this, I'd have to agree that the opportunity for Third Street looks tremendous. But when I look at this, the total spaces at Third Street are 220 spaces total. And then when we look at Pearl Street, we've got 382 spaces total. But we have an agreement in place where they have 150 with the possibility of taking another 200, which basically limits what you can do and how much you would actually invest in it if you were stuck with that type of an agreement. I also see on here where I guess UMass was renting some spaces and now they're not.
That's my understanding, Counselor.
Okay, and then I see Cherry and Webb is renting, was not renting spaces, but now are renting spaces?
In 2016, that's correct.
Yeah, looking at the numbers is what I'm saying.
Right, right. I don't know whether their, their, the tenants were there in 2014 and 15 in the Cherry and Webb building?
No, it's no difference.
UMass Dartmouth was in the Cherry and Webb building around that time. And then Atlantis Charter School took over there for their facility, for their, for their middle school and high school for a short period of time as well. So that was.
So, that was probably the transition there, councillor.
So, that $4,800 lease, whatever that is, how many spaces is that for Cherry and Webb?
I'm not sure.
And do we know how much per space?
We don't. So, a lot of this information, we had to pull together from different sources. So, we don't have the actual books and records from BBP. We were able to pull it together from some financial statements that were available to us, but we have not sat down with.
So, the 220 spaces on Third Street, that includes all of them, including one and a half stories that are presently closed?
That's correct. I believe that's correct. Mrs. Ferreira actually went out and counted the spaces.
So, when we look at the projections, as is, because it's going to remain closed, that's what you're saying, the Third Street will generate $257,800, and that's with only half the spaces, basically 110 spaces.
That's correct.
But then we go to Pearl Street with 382 spaces with none of that being closed, right? That's.
That's correct.
And that is only going to generate $121,000? I mean, that.
Pearl Street is completely underutilized right now.
Are you expecting that to, like, jump up exponentially?
Well, Mrs. Ferreira has a plan to do some marketing for it and, you know, redirect some of the potential people that need parking down to Pearl Street with signs and other marketing.
Excuse me, sir? We're in a council meeting, thank you.
Other marketing techniques. And so, she's hopeful that she can generate some additional revenue as it relates to Pearl Street, because you are correct, it's completely underutilized at this point.
Yeah, it just looks like a dog.
It is. And councillor President is correct. Pearl Street is barely a net zero, where the income has been generated to BBP from Third Street.
Yeah, so I'm with councillor President on this, is I would absolutely look at selling this. If we're stuck on that lease, we need to look at them and say, buy it or something. I can't believe there's no clauses in that agreement that allow us to get out or increase the prices, because it's either underutilized or underpaid, I'm not sure. It's just amazing to me that the revenue for Third Street, which has basically half the spaces, less than half the spaces, is generating two and a quarter times the revenue.
Well, councillor, clearly, the rates that are being charged, even to our municipal employees in the flat surface lot are approximately, you know, anywhere from, I'll say, $7 to $10 more per month than what's being charged at Pearl Street. But that was a negotiated lease agreement and.
Well, and I think the ones on Third Street are much more desirable than the Pearl Street because.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, there is a, when you're looking at the funds, you've got different rate structures going on there.
But I'd also be looking at, you know, saying that, and I know that this is an issue, that if we were there, I mean, how many people are actually working this building? Total number of people?
I don't know how many people work in this building, but there's approximately 40 city employees that rent space right now on the flat surface or within the garage on Third Street.
At $45 a month, correct?
At $45 a month. And there are very few that park at Pearl Street. There are a couple, but there are very few.
If we were to take that over 45, you know, I'd be like saying, okay, hey, they should probably get a break, a little bit better break than what they're getting right now, because I know that's an expense, and a lot of the people that work in here are making a hell of a lot of money. So, that's a concern to me. But I'm going to support this. I think the municipality should have parking garages, and I'm kind of excited about the proposals on the Third Street, parking deck and that type of stuff. I think that's a good idea and doing what we're talking about. But the Pearl Street, I think the Pearl Street property has some real concerns to it, which bother me, but I'm going to be supporting this, and hopefully, we'll be doing the right things going forward and get this thing done. I yield.
Thank you. Is there an appetite, Mrs. Viveras, if this occurs, to begin a discussion on possibly marketing the Pearl Street facility?
Yes, councillor.
And what would stop us from doing that now?
Well, again, we don't have control over it, and we have to deal with the management issues first, and at least that's been our plan, to try to address the management operational issues before we start talking about the marketing. I can tell you that we have certainly discussed the possibility of disposing of Pearl Street, and primarily because, as we've discussed, they have 25 additional years of opportunity to utilize that, not just their existing spaces, but even have an option on an additional 200. I mean, they could effectively be in full control of that garage if they so choose. So, to your point, Mr. President, I think that's a facility where we may really want to think about whether we're better off selling the asset and utilizing those funds, even to repair or invest in Third Street might be the alternative. But clearly, that's something that we would look at.
And my last quick comment is, if you do work a sale out for the Pearl Street, it'd probably be in your best interest, like you indicated, Mrs. Viveras, to reinvest that money into the other facility without going out to bond, so.
And certainly, the council would have to approve the disposition of that asset.
Of course.
So, if it was your desire to earmark those funds or to somehow, you know, redirect those funds for parking-related purposes, we'd certainly be open to that.
Fair enough. Anything further? Councillor in seat five, councillor Vice President LaBeau.
Just two quick questions. We don't have the contract for the Pearl Street garage, but they are paying what everyone else is paying. It seems like they have got double the amount of spaces for double the amount of income, correct?
If I understand your question, councillor, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it all, but if you look at their lease agreement, their base rate started at $35 per month as opposed to the 45, and then there is an opportunity for a consumer price index, but even if, even at that rate, it takes a while to get to that $45 range.
So, this projection was at the 45 rather than the 35, 150 spaces?
Yeah, Mrs. Sahadi used the existing rates, right.
The rate, not their rate.
Right.
And then one other question I had, I heard you say the 90-day out to the BBP. Would we be up and running when that ended? Would those, whatever meter system they decided to use, would that have to go up to bid? Is there going to be a lengthy process?
Yes, we believe so, councillor. If the kiosk are on the state bid list, then you don't have to do a full procurement. And as I said, Mrs. Ferreira has already researched that, because we did ask, you know, if she felt this was something she could accomplish, and, you know, she felt that it was something that was definitely viable and could be done on a timely basis.
Does the garage employees come with BBP, correct?
Yes, they're employees of BBP.
Go on at the end of that, I'm just, okay. I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. Is there a motion? There is a motion on the table, Madam Clerk? There has to be. Motion to adopt before us?
Yes, there's a motion to adopt.
There's a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded in any further discussion. Hearing none, roll call, on adoption of the order. And Madam Clerk, can you read that again into the record? We've had a lengthy discussion about this.
The order that the City Council of the City of Fall River hereby accepts and authorizes the mayor to accept the transfer of land and buildings at 157 Third Street, assessors map N 1986 and 87, and 1 Pearl Street, assessors map N 25-1, from the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, free from all encumbrances. Said conveyance to be by deed and in a form acceptable to Corporation Council.
Motion has been made and seconded, roll call on adoption.
The order, councillor Skadim?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Valaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier? Viveras? And President Ponti?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is a citation for Jared Souza.
Motion to adopt the citation as it was made by councillor Stephen Kamara, seconded by councillor Vice President LaBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Do we have the police chief's report?
Move adoption of the police chief's report.
Just shut those microphones off, we can't inspect. Move adoption of the police report, says been made by councillor Stephen Kamara, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses located at 745 Breton Avenue and 1201 Slade Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as it was made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the schedule of council meetings for 2019.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt as it was made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a number of claims.
For the Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 10 is a communication from the Department of Environmental Protection, excuse me, regarding the draft water lease license.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're down another one. Madam Clerk.
Item 11 is a communication from National Grid in regards to the 2019 yearly operational plan.
Move to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Stephen Kamara, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to take items 12 through 15 together.
Motion to take items 12 through 15 together has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, read for the record, please.
City council meeting minutes of the Committee on Finance, December 4 and December 18, 2018, as well as minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council for December 4 as well as December 18, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item is a notice of casualty and loss at 144 Winthrop Street.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have an open meeting law complaint from Colin Dias in regards to a lack of a response to an open meeting law complaint of December 4, 2018.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by councillor Skadim, seconded by councillor Long. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on January 8, 2019, voted to recommend the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action. This is the loan of $750,000 for the Community Preservation Act by a reserve project.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by councillor Skadim.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Long. Roll call. Is there any further discussion on this, may I ask? Hearing none, roll call. Madam Clerk.
On adoption of the loan order, councillor Skadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.